Hello! Good morning, everyone! Welcome to this webinar for the news of the 2023 version of Arcellios. Okay, my name is Ricardo Martin. I am PV Products Expert in Trust Software International. And we have this singular webinar today. As you know, majority of you, and I see some well-known names, you know that last Monday, we released the last version of Arcellios 2023 with new features. And today's webinar purpose is just to show you which are the main new benefits that you can find with this application. So in any case, if you need any additional assistance, you know that you can contact us anytime. You have my email address. Also, you can contact our sales team or even you can use our support channels. For all of you that you don't know us, because I see in the attendee list people that you are already customers or people that are not already. So first of all, we are going to present the company, who we are, and later, we are going to present the news of the software. The particularity of today's webinar is that we are not going to present a full project, even if we are going to play a bit with some features. But if you want to see any specific webinar, like industrial or residence or something like this, you can ask us to record it or maybe you can register in another session that we do every month. Okay, so let's start. Just to know us. Okay, who we are, Tre Software, and what we do. Tre Software is a company, it's a bigger group of companies, which is Group3s. And we are the first company to group. We are the origin of this group and we are the biggest part of the Group3s. In this case, we are software editor and services provider. We have been always focused in the electrical systems, in electricity, and also in photovoltaics. Another part of the group that you may know could be Trust Parts. In this case, this is a 2D and 3D content provider for any kind of component. And today, it is the biggest CIO library of the world. Another part of the group, which is really important in today's webinar, it is Citalia Energy, which is our design office specialized on positive energies and more specifically in case of photovoltaics. So Citalia Energy gives a strong support for the development of Arcellios for us. And in this case, we can see how Arcellios meets with the requirements of a real engineering company. Beem and Co., which is the content library and software editor for Beem methodology. In this case, you can find a big library, but also some applications for making parameters standard for those of you that are involved in the Beem methodology. Green Systems, which is a solutions and energetic audit company for analysis and monitoring of any kind of consumption, not only electricity, maybe water, gas, temperature, etc. Edificat has collaborative platform for sharing information and sharing documents related to Beem solutions. According to our timeline, we have more than 30 years of expertise. We started around 1990. And from all these years, we have been developing a lot of solutions. We can see in the top part, all the line for electrical calculation, ElecAL, we are going to see later. And in the bottom part, we can see two lines. The first one is the green one, which is SolidWorks. This is a software for schematics that we sold finally in 2019 to the Solid Systems. This is what we know today as SolidWorks Electrical. But we can focus today on the yellow ones, which is Arcellios. In this case, in 2009, we released SolarCALP. This is what we know today as Arcellios Calp. And in 2014, this was the year where Trust Software and Citalia Energy were joined. And the product that was released since this joint was Arcellios Pro. So right now, we can see that Arcellios Pro is a product with nine years of experience. Next year, we will have the 10th anniversary. So it is a good history for this product. Another services that we can highlight, for example, in 2018, the release of Arcellios O&amp;M service for monitoring. And also another highlight in 2022, our partnership with SMA, for example, to communicate with Sunny Design. Talking about our presence, we have people from a lot of countries today here. So we can reach any country of the world. We are present right now in more than 90 countries. And we can be there either directly or maybe through some subsidiaries, some partners, and any kind of distributions. So no matter wherever you are, whenever you are, if you contact us, we can reach and we can meet with the needs that you have with some different standards and so on. Let's talk about our products. And as we have seen the timeline, we have two main lines of product. The first one is our electrical part software, which is the line ElecALP. For ElecALP, this is our software for calculation and electrical design. We can solve any kind of electrical calculation. And as you can see in the image, simply, we can design any single line with any kind of load and any kind of component. And we will calculate our voltage drop, our short circuit. We will calculate the sizing of our braking devices, our sizing of the cables, for example, and making all of them fully compliant with the standard. The main features that this ElecALP has is the real-time calculation. In case of we do any modification in our installation, a full single line will be replicated always in real time. Multi-standard, in this case, we cover different standards, majorly based in the international standard IEC. But for example, we cover British standard, German standard, Spanish standard, French standard. We cover calculations for high or low voltage under same single line. We include a multi-manufacturer catalog. This is a feature common to every software that we develop. Right now, we have all the main branches of any kind of catalog, protections, cables, loads, etc., are inside of the software. And also management of electrical vehicle charging infrastructures. We can complete with different modules, like direct current module or arc flash. If we do a small downgrade, we can have ElecALP IRB. This is the downgrade for ElecALP focused on electrical vehicle charging points or charging plugs. In this case, we have all the benefits from ElecALP, but in a budget-reduced version. And in this case, we will have all the features mainly focused for these installations, like the normative controls according to the standards, for example, which resistor or device do we need to use? The real-time power balance management, updated multi-manufacturer database, management of different protective device, and qualification for the vehicle chargers is really easy because all the installation, you can size according to the standards and according to all the calculations directly with ElecALP. Products that are specific, like the Nexans new bus wires, are included, obviously, in this manufacturing database. We can do an upgrade for ElecALP, which is ElecALGrid. This is more focused for multi-source networks, like for example, a cogeneration. Maybe for all of you that are designing big power plants that are connected using several power transformers, we can use this ElecALGrid for sizing the medium voltage network. In this case, also, we can use mesh networks, like for example, the typical project for a data center. And in this case, we have all the benefits again as a unique single line for high voltage and low voltage, solving of any kind of calculation, real-time calculation. We add the grid management, but we keep the multi-manufacturer catalog. Another upgrade is ElecALBEM, the integration of the Beem methodology and electricity. In this case, we can work maybe with Revit. We have a plugin for the software. We can export our model in IFC and check into ElecALP for automatically import the circuits that are created in Revit. We will route all our cables, because we have the 3D model, we have our railways. So simply, we can calculate which is the length of our cables. And with this information, we can size our installation. We can size our voltage drop, our short circuit, and the section for our cables. And finally, we will return all the parameters from the installation into Revit. Okay, let's talk about Arcellios, which is more the focus for today. And in this case, you know about Arcellios Suite. Arcellios Suite is our solution for photovoltaics. Right now, the suite is composed by two main softwares, Arcellios Pro and Arcellios Calp. In case of Arcellios Pro, this will be the part focused on the simulation of our installation, on the 3D design, the shading analysis, the matching with your self-consumption study, etc. In case of Arcellios Calp, once we have designed our installation, once we have the forecast for our production, our economy study, then we will send the project into Arcellios Calp with all the configuration for our streams, for our inverters, just to size how our installation must be. In case of which protection do we need to use, which cable I need to use, also which voltage drop we will have in our installation, etc. So it is a complete solution for simulate, for calculate the production, for calculate the profitability study, for sizing our installation, and to edit all the reports and all the documents just to make our installation with all the permissions that are needed. We can size any kind of installation, like from the rooftop project, from the smallest rooftop project until the biggest PV plant, either if your project is self-consumption or it is just connected to grid for generating. Okay, so additionally to our solutions, we give other services. We offer other services, like you have here, manufacturer references integration. As I said, all our softwares include a multi-manufacturer database. In case of Arcellios, we have more than 600 different manufacturers included. And in case of you don't have or you don't find any specific reference, it is common maybe for PV modules. In this case, all the manufacturers are very dynamic. So if you don't find any new datasheet, you can send to us and our content department will include for you. Additionally, we have counsel and training. In this case, this is a service for all our applications. If you need any training, all our applications can be trained by our team. Technical support and updates. We have a full team of engineers in charge of this technical support and we offer a fast answer. Even in same day, you have normally the solution. I see some names that are very frequent in the support. So you know that we have a big quality support. So we give a big importance to this human factor. Additionally, we have the quality follow-up. This is given by our sales team. Periodically, you will receive just a form from our sales team to know that you are using our solution in the most efficient way. And maybe if you need any additional point, you can contact us and we will solve just to guarantee that you are working with the best efficiency that we can offer with our solutions. Okay, so right now that all the known, non-known people know us, just let's go to the news of Arcellios. Okay, all the news from this year are very focused in the management of CSV files, mainly. We have another point, like performance. In this case, for example, for big installations. Last year, we had a recurring time for calculating, like 10 megavatts was about one minute. So right now, it is 50 megavatts around one minute. So in this case, we have increased our calculation time and we have multiplied by five. Other parameters, like the electrical model, the one-diod electrical model for the modules have been optimized. Obviously, normally, you cannot see these features, but you will see in the accuracy of our calculations. So in any case, all these optimizations have been included. Even for example, for some of you that had some things in the report, for example, for different languages or different specific projects where the report maybe had some display problems, we have optimized. So right now, the report has this kind of corrections. Even for the CSV template for the output, we have included different templates in different languages. So if you want to use, simply, you know that we are now more flexible at this point. I insist, we will see all the main features in the self-consumption and also in the price list. But in any case, we will start the project and we will see other smaller features that we can see for any part of the project. Okay, so right now, we have the interface, we have the project management right now. And the first point, okay, let's talk about our plugins. You know that we have from last year, a plugin from Revit. Okay, we have the classical plugin from SketchUp. All the filters from last year were focused to optimize all this SketchUp. In case of SketchUp, we don't have any big news, just simply optimization of calculation times. In case of the irradiations, right now, we can include manually a parameter for filtering the irradiations. And in case of Revit, we have a big advance here because we have updated our plugins to be compatible with the last versions of Revit up to Revit 2024. Okay, so right now, we are compatible with every version of Revit since 2021. Okay, which is kind of common. But 2021, 2022, 23, and 24 are compatible with the plugin. Many of you have asked for the versions 2023 and even for the 2024, which is brand new. So in this case, you will know that right now you can work perfectly. Okay, right now, let's start the project and see any other features that are outside of the plugins. So right now, for example, let's create an Arcellios Pro with 3D. And we are going to see some different features that we have included. For example, okay, let's validate maybe this default location, okay, the Google headquarters. So once we validate, we see, okay, some different features that we have right now. Related to the meta database, we have updated our metronome database to the last version, Metronome 8. All the old meta stations have been updated, but also we have more meta stations that have been included in these last versions. For all of you that maybe are inside of Europe, you know that major, all of the cities have been well-covered. In this case, we have an update of data. But maybe for example, for some of you that are working in some projects in Africa, in South America, for example, where the database was not so big, all these new meta stations have been included. Even you know that we can work with different weather stations. Right now, we were, last year, we were compatible with different databases. So we have included a new one, which is 3E. This is a classical database, for example, for PVCs. So we have included a new database, which we can be compatible in case of you need to know how to import. Normally, we can go by web service or even in FAQ service, you have your tutorials about how to import every kind of database. Okay, let's keep in this window about the weather stations. Some of you have used these features, not everyone. You know that even if we have all the parameters for irradiation, we have all the parameters from the meta station, even the horizontal shading, we have at the bottom part, the irradiation in the plane, in the plane of our PV model. In this case, for example, we can check, okay, which are going to be the losses depending on the inclination of our module. Right now, for example, we have an optimal orientation, an inclination of 37 degrees. And what happens, for example, if I change the angle? For example, if we include 25, we will have, when we update, automatically, the radiation that we will have in this plane, okay, with this inclination, and also the shading losses. In this case, this will be 0.33. And right now, for example, we can check also the irradiation per month with this component. Last year, we had only these parameters, but with this 2023 version, we have also this graphic about the irradiation that we will receive per month. Okay, let's continue with our installation. Okay, right now, for example, another optimization was that in the 2D, we had the Google satellite, which in many cases, this has different accuracy than the S3. In some countries or in some places, we can check the different accuracy. But the bad point was that it was not included in the 3D. Right now, yes, we can work with Google satellite in our 3D view. We have included also this database for the 3D. Let's continue and let's include, for example, just adding a zone. For example, let's add just a flat roof, for example, in this case. We are going to do any new installation, for example, adding a PVRI, just selecting any module, for example, any one could be, for example, for 400 watts. Selecting, we have read now our installation. And for the layout parameters, maybe we can include or maybe we can give some specific parameters. Okay, right now, we have our project almost on. So if we save the layout, we have right now our installation. So let's continue. And right now, we will see the next feature. It will be at the moment that we place some inverter. Many of you have asked for this feature. So right now, we can check this window is still the same, but we have a small difference here for the filters. In this case, you know that we had filtering by name, filtering by power, by string length. But we have included an additional filter or two additional filters, output voltage and connection type. Okay, in this case, last year, we needed to know perfectly all the branch and all the ranges for our manufacturers just to know if our inverters were single phase, were three phase, etc. So right now, for some manufacturers, like for example, the one that I have in the window, SMA, we know that all the three power are three phase. But for other manufacturers, it is not so intuitive. And maybe if it is a new manufacturer for us, it may be not immediate. So for example, if I filter by single phase or even by output voltage, for example, it is not the same if we are in Europe that we are in America. For example, in Europe, we may be at 230 volts. In America, we could be at 200 volts. So in this case, if we suggest valid inverters, okay, I have all the sunny boys. But in case of I remove this filter and I add, for example, three phase plus neutral, I will have obviously all the STP, even the sensitive power. So in this case, automatically, we can suggest and we will have additional filtering for our installation. We can validate our configuration and automatically, okay, you know, we will have all our features for the wiring. It is still the same. So right now, I will complete our installation and maybe I will check, okay, with this view, for example. Okay, right now, we have our project is done. So let's go to production. In this case, we are going to see the next features that we will have. For example, okay, all the production is still the same. Additionally, a lot of you, let's take this webinar, you come from a lot of countries. But not in every country, we have the different, the same separators, for example, for decimals. In some cases, we use a dot or we use a comma. So for last year, we needed to configure our Excel interface, but obviously, this is not the optimal. In case of we do any CSV export, so we will be able to define, okay, which is the column separators. You know the CSV is not Excel, it's more like a TFC or XML. But in any case, we can define which is the separator for every data. But also, we can define which is the decimal separator that we are going to use. For example, in Spain, maybe we could use a comma. But if you are in the UK, maybe we will use the dot. So in this case, when we export the CSV, automatically, it will be compatible with the separators that we will use mainly in Excel. So in this case, this is a big advance that normally, many of you were common in support because for a residence project of 3 kilovats, maybe you had some consumptions of 7 millions of kilovats. So in this case, this will be a strong advance to manage all this CSV. Okay, let's go for the next features. Let's go for the self-consumption. In this case, for the interface, many of you already have seen that we have right now this kind of new commands, okay, which are the tutorials. In this case, if we click on this, for example, many of you that were asking, okay, how to import a new profile or how to include self-consumption in our installation? So directly, you have in a video developed by us where we can see any. Check, for example, how to work with this pack. Okay, previously, you needed to go to the FAQ section and just search for the specific feature, etc. Right now, we have for all the points that were really common in support, we have included this specific command. Okay, let's add the device and we will have again more tutorials. And right now, we can import in different ways. In this case, for, as we are in different countries, we have included more profiles. Okay, in this case, the main profiles that we have added are for Germany, from BDEW. In this case, all the typical profiles have been included. We are working in other countries where we have some regulations, some administrations by API connection, etc. But in this case, we have right now for mainly for France and for Germany. In other countries, majorly, you need to download from your distribution company and maybe you need to give, you need to receive a permission from your end customer just to have the log of the consumption. But in any case, all of you that are in Germany, you can work with typical profiles and just importing with different regulations. Okay, let's import. In this case, let's go to the yearly profile. So you know, the previous versions, we just needed to import a loading profile in CSV. And with three different columns, which was the date, the hour and the consumption. In this case, it was a rigid format. So we have a big advance, in this case, sorry, just browsing. And for example, let's go for this and check this consumption profile that I have already prepared. So if we open, just importing. Right now, we have a different interface. In this case, okay, we can define the column separator, we can define again the decimal separator. And this was the same that we had in the. In the part of the. Of the export, okay? But right now, we can check, for example, the date, okay? And the date format, if we are in different formats, okay, the hour format, for example. And also, this is important that, okay, all my profiles are depending on different periods of different. Different times, okay? In this case, it is not more needed to be only in three columns, because you can define. How to import right now our installation, okay? In this case, you can check, for example, okay, checking the first line where the data to import starts. In this case, okay, in the second one. And right now, I need to define where is the date, in this case, okay, in column number zero. Where is the hour, in column number one, okay? And in this case, okay, I have from column two to seven, I have my different periods of. Of consumption, so in this case, I can check my values are in multiple columns. And right now, I can check, for example, the start column, in this case, it will be. For the column number two, okay, for power. And for the column number seven, it will be the last one. And the units that I have, in this case, okay, these are watts or these are kilowatts. So in this case, okay, this will be kilowatts. So just checking, okay? And right now, my consumption profile is automatically imported, okay? Additionally, okay, I have the consumption, I have a typical profile. The only part that I have is the, the bills or all the quantities for consumption per month. So in this case, I can edit monthly profile. And checking, for example, if I need to modify any month. Okay, for example, okay, just in this case, we have improved this part, it's more graphic. So maybe, for example, if we check all this. These numbers, for example, I can check just eight thousand. I can modify the parameters, I can even check maybe by clicking. But obviously, it is more comfortable to do with the, with the values. So if I validate, automatically, I will modify all the months. Even, for example, if I have a typical profile, I can edit hourly. In the previous version, we had just a timeline and we needed to check and to click by percentage, okay? In this case, we have removed, we have right now, the power consumption in kilowatts, okay, or in watts. And we can check, for example, which is the consumption per hour. In this case, automatically, I can define, for example, for any other part. And I can check hour per hour in this bars graph, which is more comfortable than the line that we had before. Okay, just simply validate and I will calculate and save. And I will have right now, all my consumption profile. Okay, in this case, this is automatically created, so it will be again the same that we are, we are used to. So we have a big advance in the import of these profiles. Additionally, for example, if you have worked with a typical profile. And you have customized for this project, for example, okay, you are in a, I don't know, maybe you have a hospital. Okay, and you are working with another hospital. So in this case, maybe the consumption profile will be the same, but the second hospital is bigger, so we, we have customized. And in this case, if we want to export automatically our consumption profile, maybe to create or to use in other parameters. We can export automatically, again, in CSV with all these parameters. So we can export profile per profile, or maybe we can export for our full installation. Okay, let's go to the next step, which is economics. In this case, we have another. Another different way of entering the price list. In this case, our project will be, for example, set consumption plus grid. Okay, we will enter all the parameters, just to have later. A reliable value. Okay, you know that we can enter selling prices and purchasing prices. Okay, we can enter a hourly price profile, okay? But right now, again, this interface has changed a bit, so we have the possibility of creating a new profile. If we create a new profile, we can create any pricing profile that we may have, for example, to different periods. So for example, we can enter P1, for example, okay, zero point eighty five. And I can enter by period, by defined days, for example, for full year. And maybe by choice of days, I can select on weekend, on weekdays, okay, whatever I have, whatever I want. And for example, I can, I can select that, okay, this period will be from zero to, okay? To eight in the morning, okay? I can add any other new period, like for example, P2. And maybe, for example, it will be zero point, zero point thirty two. And maybe again, I can check from first of January to the end of the year, for example. And in this case, I will select the choice of days, okay? Which were the first one, were in the weekdays, for example. And I can click on start hour at eight and end hour will be at the end of the day. So automatically, I will have my profiles. Even, for example, I can copy, okay? Just for example, okay, this P1 and maybe, for example, this on weekends. Maybe I can just select, okay, just four weekend. And in this case, maybe, for example, it will be just ten cents, okay? And even for this P2, I can have again the same. So right now, we have on weekends and maybe it will be, I don't know, maybe ten cents. So right now, we have our profile and simply, we will have a full installation, okay? In this case, we can validate or we can export our profile to use in other, in other parameters. And for example, I could even input, for example, a more complex profile like. A six period profile, for example, that is changing between the day and also between the year. So simply, I have by a JSON format already created in ArcGIS. For example, in this case, with different lines and we have these different periods, okay? So if I validate, automatically, I will have my selling price, my purchasing price. So in this case, okay, if I calculate, I will have right now, the profitability of my study, okay? Again, it is another interface to enter some different parameters. And right now, it is really comfortable to use this hourly pricing. And we can configure in other way, which is really different than the Excel that we had in the previous times. You need to use a different formula and different, different applications. So in this case, we have automatically included in the interface of ArcGIS. So in this case, okay, we are over with the, with the pricing profile. And finally, we have another different feature for the report that a lot of you have, have been asking. In this case, okay, you know that we have some different images in our, in our PDF. So what we can do is adding more image to our report. Okay, right now, for example, we have, okay, from the very first page, we have. The information about our location, okay? But right now, we can add more figures to our, to our installation. In this case, for example, we can add the current picture for Google Maps, which is already included. But maybe we can add any 3D, for example, okay, our string plan. Add simply, we will take the capture and we have this message, the screenshot has been saved. Maybe, for example, I can check another view, okay? Just to have maybe other detail and maybe we want to print according to, okay, our inverters, okay? And just check another screenshot. Okay, so if I go again to the outputs, I have right now, three different image. Maybe, for example, you have taken a photo or maybe you have a drone. Or maybe even you want to use a specific image for you. So we could add even a picture in JPG format or wherever you, you want. Even, for example, okay, I don't want in the cover page, the map. Okay, I want, in this case, for example, the main, the main figure here. And maybe, for example, I want to reorder our, our image. So simply, for example, I can use here. So at the moment, I will generate my PDF report. You will see that you can configure all this image that you are generating into the, into the report. Okay. Let's see the final result. Just wait for a second. Okay, right now, we have our first image, okay, this was the 3D, 3D plan. Additionally, all the report keeps the same, okay? And right now, we have different project image that maybe if you want to, to check. Different views or maybe, for example, this is really interesting for, for big installations where maybe. You have, you not have only one string, or you may have in, in residence. But maybe if you are in big industrial or maybe in two megawatt or even fifty megawatt. If you take some different screenshots, you can check this, this different report. Okay, so we have seen all the features from this. From this new version of twenty twenty three. Hope many of them are according to your, to your needs. And if you have any question, just, this is the time we can help you. Okay, so we will open the questions on our surround. So. Okay. Okay, we have a question on the creation of the installation, how to do a massive deletion? Not module, per module, okay? Just simply, if you want to remove a full installation, yes, you have a, a command for delete. Okay, in this case, okay, I will show to you, yes, simply. Okay, if we edit our layout, for example, if we want to remove this part of our installation. Maybe, for example, for this, for this rooftop, we could have a split into different parts. Even, for example, these shading structures. But if I use this, I have this command at the bottom right, delete. So we can remove fully our installation, okay, on our, even in this case, I have removed even the, the zone, okay? Okay, more questions? Okay. Okay, let's get in the chat. Okay, if ArcGIS is used for designing photovoltaic projects outside on terrain instead of roofs. Sketchup software is also needed, is there a bound available or is a separate Sketchup license needed? Okay, in this case, Sketchup is, is external to us, okay, you know? This is like Rabbit or AutoCAD or even Windows, okay? So this is an additional, an additional software, okay? Okay, is there a split possible for creating two systems of the same roof? One for self consumption plus grid and one for grid only? Okay, in this case, they should be different, different projects, okay? And maybe you can split into two different, different ones, okay? So I don't know if regulations allow to have only evacuation from just one point. Okay, maybe they will be two different contracts, okay? So in this case, in ArcGIS, you have only one part. Your, your project will be autonomous or will be only for self consumption without evacuation into grid. Or it will be able to evacuate, okay? But in the case, you cannot mix. You can mix different orientations, you can mix different, different preferences, as you know. But in this case, the type of project for the profitability study, you cannot do. Okay. Okay, we have another question for the delete of. Of modules, can you remove just a line or a row? Okay, in this case, this will come, this feature will come for the next, the next version. If you want to have any other deletion of, of rows. Maybe, in this case, what you can do is using the exclusion, okay? You can define the. The surface with a specific exclusion, just in the point that you have in this line, for example, okay? Just, okay, I don't have more of the project, but in this case, you can, you can draw a border. Just in the part where you, where you want to remove the, the points. In the next version, we will improve the parts of the 3D integrated. And also, if you are using Sketchup, in this case, yes, you can do these massive deletions, partial deletions on the, on the software. Okay. I'm, I would like to ask about the connection between Sketchup and ArcGIS. An eight hundred kilowatt project is taking forever to upload to ArcGIS, is it a computer issue? Okay, Jakub, I recommend to contact me directly by, by email, okay? And we will check this project, normally, for this, for this type of project. If this is not a problem, it should be immediate, okay? So in this case, you can send, send to us the Sketchup file and see if there is any, any trouble or something like this, okay? Okay, in some cases, we know that if we are working with the project in long path, okay? We have a directory in a folder, inside the folder, inside another folder and so on, then the path is really long. And then, in this case, we have a problem of, of connection, like for example, we have in AutoCAD when we are working with references. Okay, so in this case, maybe shortening the, the path will be, will be good. So Mr. Jakub, I, I suggest you to, to send an email to us, okay? I have. I have in the, in the first slide, we had my email address, but I recommend you to, to write me, okay? Okay, more questions? Are DC AC cable lengths from the layout transferred from Sketchup or do I need to add this information manually? Okay, we are using Sketchup, all the DC cables, okay, we are working from a thing that ArcGIS manage. From the module up to the inverter, okay? So all the direct current cables can be synchronized between ArcGIS and Sketchup. And then, all these cables can go directly to ArcGIS, we can wire, we can draw our railways. And finally, if you are using ArcGIS Calc, you will have all this feedback from all the lengths of cables. Automatically imported into ArcGIS Calc to calculate the, the voltage drop, okay? Okay, we have another question in the questions polls. Do we have any news related to ArcGIS Calc? Okay, not for the moment, okay, the release for right now have been for ArcGIS Pro, not for ArcGIS Calc. ArcGIS Calc is, the development of ArcGIS Calc is different than the development in ArcGIS Pro. We expect to have an inversion soon, it will have optimization of calculation and correction of some deletions and so. Okay, if you have any more question, we have a couple of minutes more. So in any case, if you have any additional question, you can contact us, you can contact me, my, my email address. You can contact our sales team, in this case, just to have. If you want to have any commercial information or you can contact sales@trace-software.com. And even you can contact us using forms in our website. And you can follow us. And you can follow us in LinkedIn or in YouTube, where you will find lot of news related to all our products, even technical articles. So you are invited to follow us, okay? Hope you enjoy the webinar, hope for all the customers, all the already customers. Hope these new features are interesting for you and will help you a lot. If you need any additional information, you can contact us, okay? And we will, we can explain anything. And for all the news, all the new people, we are invited to, we invite you to follow us and to contact us and hope you enjoy ArcGIS. If you need anything, any additional information, you are free to contact in any case. Okay, have a good day and we will see you soon. Goodbye.